I'll start the preamble here. Fashionably late for their public service. I'm going to take a moment here to introduce our board members. On the audience's right is Tom DiCio. Next to him is Rhonda Sidillo. On my right is Marlaus Jones. Next to her is Justin Gross. And next to him is Heather Ann Rowe. We're missing one board member today, Dave Gair. But we have a seven-member board. And I'm sorry to hear that Justin Gross, who's been with us for the last four and a half years, will be leaving the board after this hearing. Justin has been, depending on what the word is, hired or appointed as a magistrate judge, correct? Yeah. So Justin was appointed in November of 2019 to this board by Councilman Justin Mandelbaum to represent the -- Justin, I know I can speak on behalf of not just my board colleagues, but probably our city staff and a good majority of the citizens that you've served on this board honorably with integrity. I've always appreciated how you listen to everyone, give good consideration to each and everyone that's here, both sides of the coin. But then you analyze the situation, use the facts as presented, and kind of the guidelines we have to make your decision. And I couldn't ask for anything better for somebody professionally. And personally, you're just a great guy.
Thank you.
And when I was saying about remarks, I'm like, well, I hope our paths cross again, but I don't want it to be in court.
Yeah. A token.
So as a token of our appreciation, we have a certificate of recognition from the City of Des Moines and also from your colleagues here from the Board of Adjustment. I want to present you with this plaque to honor your service and your thanks from all of us. And we have a nifty card and some other paper. If there's anything you want to say, feel free to here. Yeah? There's a deposit on the frame, yeah.
No, I do have a couple of things. Just, I thank you so much for letting me be a part of a great board. I feel honored and blessed to be able to, you know, share my thoughts and opinion with this board for the last four and a half years. And I will still be around, so I hope to run into each one of you guys.
You're not moving. You're not moving from Des Moines.
Right. So, thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Justin. Okay, so we'll get back assisting us today includes the board talk. I'll introduce city staff. Senior city planner is Frank Dunn Young. Then we have Bert Dross, the deputy planning administrator. Kathryn Drehaas, city planner. And Chris Hiles Cove, zoning enforcement officer. And our meeting moderator to run all the audio and video is Carletta Wolder down here in front. So I'm going to cover the meeting's procedure here. For those of you who are here today that are going to presenting or may have comments, I'll kind of go through how the hearing works. But don't be nervous or afraid about the process. We will guide you through that. But to give you some background here, first and foremost, the zoning board of adjustment is a quasi-legal board. This hearing will be conducted within the procedures and format as authorized by Iowa law and this city's ordinances. The meeting is open to the public. The meeting is being recorded by both audio and video for a legal record of these proceedings. The board members have each received a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations. And if you're here today and don't have a copy of the agenda and the staff recommendations and would like one, they're in the little black trays here right by the doors you came in. So when I'm through with my comments, if you want to step up and grab one, you're welcome to do so. The board is required to base its decision on each item upon the criteria established by law for the type of relief sought by the applicant. The law applicable to each case has been identified in the written staff report. If the facts, as determined by this board, demonstrates that the criteria established by law for granting the relief has been satisfied, then the board must grant the relief. Otherwise, the board must deny the requested relief. Each item will be announced in the order that it appears on the agenda. Items that are listed on the consent portion of the agenda, which is our first segment of the agenda, are not planned to be individually discussed. Rather, they will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless the appellant either does not agree to the conditions that have been recommended by staff, or if there's an individual or a board member here in the audience that requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda so that a full discussion on the matter can occur. So I'll come back to that consent agenda here in just a few moments to review that briefly with the audience. For the regular portion of our agenda, after an item is announced, city staff will first give a brief overview of the appeal, and they will present any written comments that have been received prior to the hearing. Then the applicant or their representative will be allowed up to 10 minutes to present the reasoning for their appeal. We'll then move to the public comment portion of the hearing for that agenda item, and anyone who wishes to speak in support of, in opposition to, or even in neutrality of an appeal will be allowed up to five minutes each to provide their comments. This will be their one and only opportunity to address the board for the item at hand. Once all concerned citizens have spoken, the board will then ask any additional questions of city staff. Finally, the applicant will be given three more minutes for a rebuttal or other closing comments if they so choose. All speakers must only speak from the podium here at the center of the room by the screen. There's a little microphone. You might have to tip that down for yourself. We ask that you first give both your name and address of business or residence as appropriate. In the event, you may need to be contacted for legal notices that are related to the outcome of this appeal. All speakers are requested to remain courteous and to focus their comments only upon those facts that demonstrate whether or not the criteria established by law has been satisfied. Speakers are also asked to ensure that they are respectful of time considerations. If necessary, the board chair will limit further comments by a speaker if they exceed their time limitation. The board chair will then close any further public comment on the agenda item, and the board will immediately deliberate the request and will make a decision here today on the appeal. Please note that it takes at least four affirmative votes for any zoning appeal to gain approval. If your appeal is approved today, we'd ask that you wait until at least about maybe a week from today's hearing if you need to contact the city's permit and development center to obtain any necessary building or sign permits that are related to your appeal. This will allow the decision of the board to be documented in the form of a decision and order, which will be provided to you and to city staff. Any appeal that is approved by this board must be implemented, constructed, or otherwise utilized within two years of the date of the decision by this board, or such approval shall expire. The decisions of this board can only be appealed in the Iowa District Court. So if you believe you've been harmed by an error made by this board, your only remedy is to seek relief through the district court within 30 days of the filing of the board's decision and order. If you believe the zoning regulations applied by this board are wrong, you may petition the city council to change those regulations for future considerations. Any material that is written or otherwise used today as part of any presentation is part of the permanent record. So if you've got any plans, documents, photos that you plan to show today, if you have not already given city staff appropriate copies or ability to copy those, you'll need to do so. If you would like a copy of anything presented today, you can contact city staff after the hearing. Just some quick, brief housekeeping items. We ask that you please avoid any undue conversation in the audience so as to limit distractions during the hearing. Please ensure your cellphone has been silenced. Sounds okay so far. If you need to use the restroom, you can just walk through the doors here. You don't have to go downstairs. There's restrooms just past the staircase on your left by the elevators. Once an agenda item that you're interested in has been completed, you're welcome to leave the meeting, or you can stick around and listen and learn. We'll have a five-minute break in the meeting around 3:00 or thereafter if needed. So that's our background. Again, we will take you through this step by step, so don't worry about that. So we're going to begin with our consent agenda. We have three items that staff is recommending for approval, subject to the applicant meeting the city's suggested staff recommendations for compliance with terms and conditions. So what I'm going to do here is first ask city staff, do we have any changes to that agenda or any proposed additions?
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the board. Staff is requesting that item six, well, the applicant has requested that item six be continued. Staff is supportive of that request. The item pertains to installation of two monument signs on the property that are in the exact same location as those, the existing monument signs. However, there's, they're required to be larger than, or they're asking for them to be larger than what is currently allowed by code. And one of the sign is in both a vision clearance and a flood district. And so it's about a foot, foot and a half in the vision clearance. They're looking at acquiring some right-of-way. So they're working with real estate to possibly handle some of the variance requirements.
All right, so item six, staff or the applicant has requested that this be moved to the next regular hearing. Would there be?
Actually, that would be June.
June, oh.
They'll be doing a set date of hearing for acquisition of right-of-way and then going to council, and that would not take place complete until June 3rd.
So two months from today, so our June hearing?
Correct.
Okay. All right, so then there'd be a motion to defer this to our June hearing. If there's no other questions from the board, would there be a motion to grant the requested continuance? Motion by Rhonda, second by Marlaus. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. All right, no nays. Motion carries 6-0. All right, so we're not going to hear item six today. So going back to the consent agenda, I'm going to poll the audience here. Item one is a conditional use request at 4,000 East 29th related to conversion of an existing building to an assembly place of worship use, which just requires, generally speaking, a review by this board to see if it would fit into the general character of the neighborhood. Staff is recommending approval, subject to some probably standard requirements. Is there anybody in the audience who would be opposed to this board granting the conditional use as requested? If so, just raise your right hand, and then we will take this off consent, and we'll have a full agenda review of that item. Anybody opposed to granting conditional use for item one? Seeing none. Item two is a zoning exception request, 5,100 Hubble Avenue, related to installation of a sign and an exception related to the overall square footage of the sign. Again, staff is recommending approval of this with some reasonable exceptions. Anybody in the audience opposed to granting the requested exception for item two? Seeing none. Item three is a conditional use request by the City of Des Moines for redevelopment of an existing vacant lot for a non-accessory parking lot. It's a vicinity of 500 Southeast 2nd Avenue. Anybody here in the audience opposed to this board granting that request? Okay, seeing none. We've got three items on consent. Unless the board has any concerns, would there be a motion to approve the items on consent? All right, motion by Marlaus, second by Rhonda. Quite the team. All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries 6-0. So if you were here for items one, two, or three, those have been approved, subject to the staff recommendations, you'll get a copy of that decision and order about a week from today. So we'll just pause for a moment here. If any folks want to leave the audience. Hello, Jake, how are you? All right. Thanks for coming down. All right, so this will bring us to our regular portion of the hearing. So what we'll do here is we'll start. Our first item is a conditional use request at 4,133 Urbendale Avenue, and the city staff will first give a brief overview of the requested use.
Item four is located at 4,133 Urbendale Avenue, and it is, it's being brought to us by Tower Co. They are proposing to construct a 150-foot communications tower, and the appeal requires a conditional use for a communications tower in MX-1 mixed-use district. So I'll go ahead and set the scene for where this is being proposed. The site, surrounded in yellow in front of you, is approximately, not quite, an acre. It's 34,500 square feet. It fronts Urbendale Avenue. It is, today it has a consist of a Masonic Lodge and a parking lot. And so to the north is Holy Trinity Church. To the northeast would be a law office. And then to the west is a restaurant, and I believe it's Pilates. And then to the south, it'd be residential, and also to the west would be residential as well. The subject property is zoned MX-1, and so the use would be allowed by granting a conditional use, subject to meeting all of the applicable criteria. And so here is a view of the property as you would face northeast on the opposite side of the median in, on Urbendale Avenue. And this is a closer view of the parking lot. This is directed a little more easterly. And then here is a picture of the parking lot viewed east. Right now, they're proposing to put the leased area and the communications tower back in this area. Kind of hard to see. And then, once again, this would be from Urbendale Avenue, close to the access drive. And so it would be proposed in this area, the leased compound area and tower. And this is just a visual of the existing Masonic Lodge that is there. It's approximately two stories, maybe a little bit more than 20 feet in height. And so here is the drawing that was presented by Tower Co. What it shows is a 50-foot, or a 50-by-50-foot compound with the cell tower in the middle. And I'll actually, and so you, it's important to show, here's Urbendale Avenue. The building is up in this area, and then it would be to the very rear of the property on the east side, up in the corner. It would take over the parking stalls that are in that area and part of the access drive from this direction. And so this shows a little bit, a little bit closer. Here is the cell tower, 50-by-foot leased area. Here, equipment associated with the communications towers would be there. Now, the fence that will be around it will screen a majority of the equipment that's behind there, including the building. And it would be a solid wooden fence that they're proposing. And this is just kind of some semblance of what that fence would look like. And then here's the communication tower itself. Once again, it's, the tower is 150 foot tall. With pertinences, it's 155. It will have the capacity to provide for three carriers as designed. Okay, and so one of the things that the applicant is required to provide us with are propagation maps, well, showing why is this needed in this area. And the closest cell tower to them would be VFW that is down Beaver Avenue. However, today, as it sits, that's fully occupied, so it has, already has three existing carriers, so they would not be able to place their service on that tower. So they are proposing this. I did put a bubble here just to show on their propagation maps where they're proposing to sit this tower. They have indicated that all other areas that they looked at would be more in residential areas, so this seemed to be the best place for kind of serving the general area and south of there where they kind of have some gaps. It's intended to increase service as well as expand the 5G network. And so staff is supportive of their request. However, there are a couple of things that we have asked the applicant to consider. That is moving the leased area as southerly as possible. I'll go back to the image that you could see before. So we are asking the applicant to move that as southerly as they possibly can. In that, by doing so, it would help screen some of the visibility concerns for the compound areas that would be more towards being behind the building and screened by the building. One of the criteria is to have a setback to residentially zoned area. By moving it to the south, it would be no closer than what they've already proposed. The closest residential property would be just on the west side of 42nd Street, and that's 160 foot plus that direction. Which staff also believes that by moving, by moving the cell tower a little further south, it would also assist with some of the potential safety concerns associated with the playground over on Holy Trinity and some of the area that is used for parking in that So I'm going to go back to staff recommendation is to allow for the cell tower. However, we do have two conditions. The first condition is that, as I stated, the 50-by-50-foot leased area would be moved, shifted southerly on the property, located as close to the existing building as possible to the satisfaction of the city planning administrator. And the reason that is as it is, is because there could be some other engineering concerns or other unknowns within the site that might not allow it to shift as far as, as far as they possibly could. So it would be to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. They also, as part of their review, they must comply with all site plan and building code requirements. So they will have to work through that process. Now, we did send out comments, we did send out for comment cards. We, as you can see on the map, we did receive some folks who were in opposition. We received folks, opposition is in red, neutral would be in yellow, and then green would be in support. And then the other areas didn't respond, one requesting comments. I'll just go ahead and zoom out a touch so you can see these comment cards. And so these first few are in opposition. Now it's total of four, and then we do have undecided, and then support. The applicant, any conditional use is required to hold a neighborhood meeting. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting, and I'll go ahead and zoom in on that so you And so once again, talking about the propagation maps, were other sites considered? What kind of screening would you have? And then stealthing of the tower. Typically, what's stealthing of the tower? Technologies that we typically see are the mechanical equipment is screened, the tower is sleek, all the cabling is inside the tower. And then it would have a gray matte finish, gray galvanized finish to preferably blend in with some of our beautiful Iowa skies. Here are the attendees to that meeting. And that is staff's presentation. Do you have any questions for staff?
So the church, is that, is there a school at that church? Is that why you mentioned a playground?
The school does have, or the church does have a parochial school that, that is located there.
And Frank, related to that, there's a required setback from residential properties, correct? Is that setback supposed to be equal to the height of the tower from the location of the tower to the residential property?
That is correct.
So a direct radius from the base of the tower? It's got to be away from a residential. But the church is not considered a residential location even though there is a playground there, right?
Correct. That would be public, civic, institutional.
But the city's, in essence, through the planning administrator, hey, put as close to your building as possible. It just keeps it further away from that even though there's not a setback required.
Correct.
That's the city's interest.
That is correct.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Can we ask questions?
In following our format, you will be able to. You missed my preamble.
I'm sorry.
But I'll just give it to you quickly. Staff presents, then the applicant presents. They have 10 minutes. Anybody to speak in support or in opposition then has five minutes. Anybody to speak in support or in opposition then has five minutes. So at the time that you feel is appropriate, when I announce who's up to bat next, you're welcome to come up. All right, so since staff has given a brief overview of the requested use, now the applicant, they've got up to 10 minutes to present their reasoning for us to approve their requested use. And we just need your name and address.
Chairman, members of the board, my name is Chris Pose. My office address is 317, no, it's not, I moved, 505 Fifth Avenue, Suite 1005. I lived, or I was working for 20 years at 317 Sixth Avenue. It's always tough for me to get used to changing the address. The request before you, I want to give the board a little bit of a background on, this is the second cell tower, I think, that has come before the board in as many years in the city's new requirements for doing cell towers. Unlike other applications where an applicant will come forward and ask for a conditional use and then go to the building department and get all their drawings done, the city legal department asks that all of the building plans, all of the engineering drawings, all of your foundation drawings for the tower, all of your safety plans for the tower be submitted first. So this application has had all of that work done, and that's why they're on this particular site and where they are. In addition, they have to have the cooperation of the landowner who is leasing the space, and the landowner dictates where the space can be on the particular property. So that background has been completed. It's a little bit different from other applications the board sees that Tower Co. and T-Mobile have spent an awful lot of money and effort in making sure that this site will in fact work. I want to go back and tell you a little bit about the neighborhood meeting. And first, maybe I should just say that we agree with the staff recommendation. We understand what the staff recommendation is asking Tower Co. to do. We're going to work on that condition. We need to have the site resurveyed to do that, to see just what the electrical capability is of the site. And we have to work with not only a campus, we're going to work at the Beverdale Fall Festival and make sure that the placement of the tower would not be any impact to them. The neighborhood meeting that we had, I think it was on early April that we did it, I think April 10th is the day that we did it, was very well attended, but very few people who actually live in the 250-foot circle attended. Of the people you saw on the sheet who signed in, only two of them actually were from the radius where it was, drew a lot of attention in Beverdale. And Dave Busek is here from the Beverdale Neighborhood Association, can speak to that part of the issue. But we worked very closely with the Beverdale Fall Festival crew because they have an electrical box. And Frank, can you put the drawing of the site back up? The one that just shows the, no, the aerial photo just of the, with the property hatched in.
Sure. Kind of the radius map there?
Keep going, not the radius map.
Okay. Vicinity map?
No, he had it, there we go, perfect. The northwest corner of the property is where a utility cluster is on the site. There's a couple of utility poles, one of which belongs to the Beverdale Fall Festival, or at least contains their electric box. We wanted to make sure that we were not interfering with it at the existing site so as to disrupt their parade activities, or I shouldn't say parade, but their carnival activities that they install on the site for the Beverdale Fall Festival. And thankfully, we did not. But the utilities that are in the northwest corner was part of the reason it was placed where it was. We will work with the staff to see if it can move south closer to the building and work with the campus. We'll work with the Beverdale Fall Festival to make sure that that will work. And we'll of course work with the city staff and Tower Co. to make sure that that happens. The tower that's at the, we were requested to look at the tower that's on the VFW property, but as Frank had mentioned, that tower is, I think, taller than this one, 170 feet, but it's already full. It has the major carrier on it and then two other smaller is below it. So there's no other opportunity in Beverdale at this time to meet the requirements. Frank, that propagation map that you had, can you get to that? It was part of the letter. The other thing that impacts this site or is causing it to occur, okay, if you look on this propagation map here, let's see, I don't have a pointer, do I, that I can tell?
Mouse.
Mouse? Mouse, there we go. Okay, right here is Water Tower Park. There is an existing water tank there that T-Mobile has, this is why it's grayed, but T-Mobile has equipment on that with a lease that expires in 2026. The Des Moines Water Works, you might have heard, has gone around to all their tanks and told all the cellular equipment on there that they have to move. They don't want them up on their tanks anymore because of maintenance issues or whatever issue. So Tower Co., about a year ago or so, I represented them when they got off the Hall Avenue water tank and we found space on the Water Works property to put a new tower that worked pretty well. That effort was tried with the Water Tower Place property, but a tower cannot go there because the Water Tower and Water, and Tower Park is an historical structure. So the state will not allow anything that's a visual impediment to the tower. So hence, that's why Tower Co. is looking for a space in southwest Beverdale. And as they vindicated by their submittals, they tried looking in other areas before getting to this location. And if we go back to the map that has the, the actual site on it, you can kind of see one of the issues that comes up. Most of that land is residential where this, this would be a bigger impact than it is being placed on the Acanthus property. Nope, back one, there you go. All of that to the southwest is residential. And then you get into this area, and the city ordinances require height of the tower setback from anything residential. So that pushes the tower to the eastern part of the site because the, the houses that are to the west of 42nd Street are residentially zoned. The houses across Urbandale Avenue are also residentially zoned, so it pushes it into the commercials, commercial zone. And that's why the northwest corner, or northeast corner of the site was originally chosen. We have no objection, as I said, to the staff condition. We'll work with the staff to see if it can move south and meet all the engineering requirements that would be necessary and, and meet the staff recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. Carrie Fazarelli from Tower, or Tower Co. is actually here too and can speak to any questions you might have.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Pose? Tom?
Excuse me, Chris, just looking at the map. What other locations in Beverdale were looked at, just besides this one?
Well, first of all, they, they need to find a willing, or willing landowner who's willing to
I understand that.
To look at it. Tower, Tower Park was looked at for certain, and a willing landowner was found at this location. So this is the site that they've, they've looked at and pursued.
So the city wasn't able to sell many of Tower Park, or lease any of Tower Park's area?
Well, I don't think the city can, Tom, because the, the water tower there is a historical structure.
Okay.
So that, that was the, the issue that presented it at that location.
All right. And so the people that, the letters that came back from the neighbors, neighborhood letters, they saw Christopher's was a no, is that correct? And Holy Trinity's was undecided.
Tom, to best of my knowledge, I talked to Ron Giudiceci at Christopher's, and he wasn't, I think the staff has colored it no because the Pilates studio that is there filed the objection card, right?
But they're still a tenant.
They're a tenant.
And they're a voting tenant.
Their tenant votes are accepted, but I want to say that we've talked to Christopher's and all, and we're aware of their position on it.
That's me. I'm directly in front of you. I have to look at this for the rest of my life.
All right, let's hold on just a second here, and we'll, we'll get to other speakers here in just a moment. Any other questions for Chris?
I have a question. But what happens if you don't get the, the conditional use?
Actually, I think it'd be very hard to not give us the conditional use, given the city's requirements and what we've met with it, and also the Telecommunications Act. So we've not considered what would happen if this were, if this were denied.
So just to get this straight and clarify it, you're losing access to a certain part of the area when the Water Works thing, is that right? You had equipment that is going to, in 2026, be no longer active? Is that right?
That's
Okay, so then you're trying to build a tower in order to cover that area, is that right?
That's correct. The other, the other issue with the equipment that's on the Water Works tower is it's not 5G. It isn't 5G capable, and the networks are moving to 5G. So by doing this, they can upgrade the equipment as well. They can't upgrade it on the existing tower at Water Tower Place, and why would they with only a, a short lease period to do it? So they're trying to provide coverage to this area that, that they know they will need.
So has it been mentioned, Chris, that they want you to move, you want them to move to the southeast corner, is that correct?
No, they, what they, I think what they want to do, maybe get the site drawing up there.
Yeah.
Might be helpful to understand. And not that one, the one that shows it within the, there we go. Okay. Here's, here's where the tower site is now. The staff would like to see how far south it could go on this line, okay? We're not hearing from the staff, and we understand why, because of the distances involved, that we can go very far west. There's not much room there to the west and still meet the setback. So the sliding scale for the tower is right in here.
So what happens if you can't get that there?
We're going to work on that, Tom. We have to work with the campus, the landowner, because the lease area that we presently have at this time is this site right here. And so a campus has to agree to let that happen. And we're going to work with the campus and the Beverdale Fall Festival to make sure that whatever site that we select in this area doesn't impact what their use is.
All right, other questions for Chris? Okay, thank you, sir. We'll check back with you in a few minutes. Okay, so the way the hearing works now, if there's anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for placement of the tower through this conditional use, anybody in support? If those want to speak, you can step forward. Seeing none, is there anybody wishes to speak in opposition? If there are, you can look at each other, decide who wants to go first, but step up to the microphone. We need your name, address, and you've got five minutes. Anybody to speak in opposition? Step on up.
Good afternoon. Sorry I was late, I was with patients. I own the dental office directly in front of the property. If you can back up, my property is not properly notated in red.
And what's your name and address, sir?
Dr. Dennis Winter.
Okay.
And I'm at 2901 Beaver.
Okay.
And yes, if you can, I'm directly across from Christopher's. The map that shows the areas in red, if you can pop that up, there's just a little red strip across my sidewalk, but I have a half an acre property there.
Okay.
And I'm definitely in opposition of this. See that little red strip?
Yeah.
That's my lot. And next door to me is an apartment building, which is 52 apartments, which are residential, which, what is, is the setback 150 feet? I don't think that's 150 feet from the property that we're talking about. So I would think it's in violation of any residential setback. My property is mixed use. My property is both, it is a dental office, a dental laboratory, but it was residential. And I think I can revert it back to residential. But my number one objection is, it's a huge eyesore. It's clearly being done for financial reasons so the Acanthus Lodge can perhaps survive. I don't know if they're running out of money, but I'd like to know how much do they get every month for this lease? Because I'm guessing it's purely financial, and it would definitely decrease my property value. And everyone that I've talked to, all my friends and neighbors in Beverdale are opposed to this. So I don't know where everybody is, but, you know, it's not, not wanted. I mean, why can't I put a tower on my property? If they can put one on theirs, then can I put one on mine also? Becomes my question. How many towers can we have? We have one up the street in front of Casey's. I would think it could be expanded. There's plenty of property. It's definitely a higher property. They're, they're probably 50 to 75 feet higher in elevation than this location is if they just go up the street. So I don't think it makes a lot of sense. You're dropping this in the middle of a residential neighborhood for purely financial reasons. What other reason is there? Could benefit a campus, that's it. It doesn't benefit anyone else. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate you coming in today. Anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition? Come on up. We just need your name, address. You've got up to five minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Artley, and I am a resident, excuse me, and I live at 2807 42nd Street. So it's just on the south side of Urbandale Avenue. So I'm not as close as this gentleman, certainly, but clearly it's a residential area. When I came today, I wasn't in favor or opposed. I was just undecided and imagined that I would be undecided. And I am not now. I'm opposed to it. I don't have any really good reasons other than aesthetics. As towers go, I guess it's not that ugly, but it's still right out my, my side, it's this big, huge tower that will be an eyesore. Right now, it's lovely. There's trees, and it's a nice rural, or a nice residential neighborhood, and a neighborhood that I specifically bought into because of how pretty it is and yet how well it works with all of the kind of soft industry along Beaver Avenue. So I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down and sharing your comments. Anybody else opposed? Going once, going twice? We do have a provision, if you want to speak in neutrality, you don't have to be for it, against it, just are there any other reasonable considerations the board should look at? Anything from the public in neutrality? All right, seeing none, do we have further questions for staff? And I'll also give an opportunity, zoning enforcement officer, you don't have to, but is there anything you would feel you'd need to add? Christopher? Nope, you're good too. Okay, all right. So applicant, you've got up to three minutes for closing comments or rebuttal as you may choose, up to you.
I'm just happy to answer any questions you might have. I, I think that the, the site that we've chosen is, meets the city's requirements from any residential property that is to the west. There are no setbacks for the commercial properties that are to the, to the east or to the north under the city zoning ordinance. And so in this sense, I think we've tried to avoid in the best way possible the residential area. And in fact, I don't, I don't think that once it's erected, it will really impact the, the character of the Beverdale area. It's a very nice area. It's, it's well-used, and as I said, we're going to work with the community festival, the Beverdale Fall Festival, to make sure that the sighting of the tower doesn't impact them, so.
Chris, just kind of one question here. It was brought up maybe kind of as a statement more than a question, but, you know, just the tower's being built here for financial reasons only. Cell phone companies don't like to build towers unless they absolutely have to, right?
That's correct.
And they build the towers to accomplish what?
Accomplish coverage is what they're really looking to do.
So then I'm assuming you begin a process of, you see where your coverage is missing, so we're not going to build a tower on south side of Des Moines because coverage is missing in this area. Then the next step is to what? Reach out and look for sites that would either have some elbow room, be large enough, meet the minimum setback, and then you have to have what? An agreeable party.
Exactly right.
Okay. And certainly that agreeable party, you're going to pay them a lease, right?
Yes.
Right. But you would have never come to knock on their door unless But you would have never come to knock on their door unless the company you represent needs to find a place to build a tower in that general area.
That's correct.
Correct?
Yeah. And also, under the Des Moines system, the one thing to note, and this tower will have it too, T-Mobile is going to take the one spot on the tower and necessitate its building, but there'll be two other locations below.
Right.
And there's two other equipment building pads within the leased area that can be occupied by other carriers. So the vacancy that doesn't exist up at the VFW right now, we will have with this tower and provide other antenna that go there. And they will not have the impact that the first one does, that comes along. So, yes, it is built on need, and it is not something that my clients take lightly.
Gotcha. Any other questions for Chris?
Real quick. Yes? Chris, there was another comment mentioned about, well, why not expand a current tower that's not too far from this one? I think that was the comment. Can you respond to that?
I think the engineering of the towers, when they're originally built on the sites, dictates what they can hold. And the one at the VFW is the only one that I'm familiar with in the Beaverdale area, was designed in accordance with the Des Moines regulations, and was designed only to carriers. I think they'd have to totally rebuild the tower to carry more. And then my guess is that it would have to be higher in height in that area, and then accommodate the additional things. I don't know that there'd be that much ability to do that at that location.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. So.
Can we ask Chris questions?
No. You've given your opportunity to give your comments. Within your five minutes you were allocated. So now we'll close public portion. We'll go to board deliberation. So board members, now it's time for our conversation between us. So you've seen what's been presented here today. Cell phone towers do come to this board periodically. We have reviewed those cell phone towers under the legal requirements we have, generally speaking, as best as possible. They're supposed to blend in as much as they can to the immediate surrounding area. So, any initial thoughts, questions, concerns?
Chair, you know, it seems like, you know, that everyone involved, at least from the city and Tower, are trying to balance the interests of both the commercial and residential. And this is a mixed-use. It's not, it is not strictly residential here. It's actually pretty highly commercial in that corridor there. And so with taking, I guess, in consideration what the city wants, the recommendation of trying to move it closer to that building, you know, I'm fine with approving the staff recommendation.
Other thoughts? Heather?
Does this lease go with the property?
Yes.
Forever?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. I do believe there is one provision, if staff cannot, or Gary, if through technology or whatever, there's no need for these in the year 2525, if man is still alive, then, come on, then the tower has to be, has to go away. Isn't there something like that buried somewhere in there? It's not any wagon to hitch to, because, yes, it does run perpetual, but I believe if it's not necessary to have it anymore, that would be the only, that's the way to get rid of it. So.
I'm not familiar with that. I can look into it while you're discussing, if you'd like for me to, but that's.
But generally speaking, if the lodge goes away tomorrow, if they go under, or they sell to somebody else, yes, that new owner, much like we have in the billboard ordinance, those go with the property as well. So subsequent owner can't say, no, I've changed my mind. Right? Bert?
This one usually goes with the line that would go.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Yeah. And again, I want to ask for staff there for some clarification on our conversation. Yep.
I do understand the concerns of the two individuals who spoke in opposition to it, but working in telecom for 41 years, I also understand what it takes to get the cell towers in the correct place.
Yep.
And especially when technology moves forward, it becomes a necessity, almost.
Right.
So I am supportive of this.
And these are always tough, and not to use an overused phrase, but the "not in my backyard" thing. We don't really get too concerned about these things until, oh, there's going to be one near me. I've lived in the same house for 20 years, I can look out my kitchen window and see a cell phone tower, if I want to really sit there and stare at it. But otherwise, I don't even notice it's there. Generally speaking, once these are installed, think of a telephone pole, think of a water tower. I don't like telephone poles. I don't like transformers. But that's not what affects our property values in Des Moines. What affects our property values is if our neighbor doesn't take care of his house, if he's got a car on blocks, if he doesn't mow his lawn, except for maybe the month of May. But I understand where the initial concerns come from, but when you look at the need to place, this is a utility. Everybody wants coverage. Everybody wants to know their phone works. Everybody wants high-speed internet. If you don't have it, you're going to get mad, and you're not going to want to live somewhere. But when we have to look at, our role here is to see, does this blend in as much as it can with their surrounding area? This is a commercial area in this very direct vicinity. And true confessions, which I'm not going to do up at the church, when I go park at Christopher's Restaurant, I have probably parked in everybody's lot around there illegally. It's just a sea of concrete there. I'm not saying it's terrible, but I'm not saying that's the best thing either, but this is the best location in this general vicinity to try to site one of these. It's outside of the city's required setbacks, to take residential concerns in mind, and their representative said that they would try, in essence, put words in his mouth here a little, as much as possible, shoulder that tower up toward the backside of the building, if they can reasonably do that. Just like, you know, if you're going to have a lawn and garden shed on your property, instead of in the corner by the neighbor, you get it up behind your own house a little bit. So I think everybody's doing their best they can to make this fit. There is a need for this. That's been pretty evident here. This fits in the best it can. So I'm going to move staff recommendation to recommend approval of the conditional use, subject to staff recommendation. If there's any other comments, or a second, and we'll see where we go. All right. So, yes, Tom?
Yeah. Right. So, the way staff has put this out, to the satisfaction of the planning administrator. So if there's a good-faith effort to try to pull it forward, but they say, hey, there's a 10-foot underground sewer line here, and we can't shove this forward, the planning administrator will probably say, okay, you tried, within reason. Yeah. So rather than like a tennis volley back and forth, within reason, our board is saying, try your best to pull it up toward the building, and the planning administrator will determine if you've tried your best. But at a minimum, that's the location where it would end up going, which is the furthest away from any residential. So we've got a motion by Mel, second by Marlis. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Those opposed? Two. All right. So, motion carries four to two. It takes four affirmative votes. So, continue to work with staff and the planning administrator on that, and give it your best there to blend in. We appreciate everybody coming in to share their comments.
Is there an appeal process?
As I explained in my preamble, if anybody wishes to appeal this decision, they can do so in the Polk County District Court. You have to file in the court within 30 days of the board's decision and order, which will be issued sometime next week.
So it barely passed, four to two.
It passed four to two. It takes four affirmative votes to pass.
All we need is one vote.
All right. We're going to move on with our next hearing item, and that'll bring us to, we have one item that we're deferring. Hang on a second, I gotta go back to the front end here. So item five is a variance request at 3718 Southwest 9th Street. And Catherine's going to give us a little background on this one.
Chair, members of the board, Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city of Des Moines. As mentioned, the property is located at 3718 Southwest 9th Street. This is at the corner, Southwest 9th Street and Rose Avenue. As mentioned, we've got three variances before us. One for the provision that a non-conforming pole sign may not be enlarged or altered in a way that increases the nonconformity, variance of a prohibited sign type to allow placement of an electronic display on a freestanding pole sign, and variance of a prohibited sign type to allow retention of a nonconforming pole sign. They are, the company is looking to update the property with various signage. The main one before us today, or, excuse me, the only one before us today, is the sign labeled D down in the lower corner. And then you can see the existing pole sign as it is. When the zoning ordinance was updated in 2019, we got rid of pole signs. This pole sign was legal nonconforming at that time. From this photo, as you can see, on the left-hand side, the sign company labeled it existing. The sign has been updated. Sunzap photo was taken to include the electronic displays that you see on the right-hand rendering, but otherwise, the sign looks similar to what you see on existing. I just want to clarify that. It's no longer exactly existing, and it looks closer to what's proposed. And, let's see, that's very similar. And then I do have a narrative, and then I'll get into the history a little bit more from the sign company that submitted the sign proposal, or, excuse me, the sign permit. I'll let you finish reading that, and I'll go ahead and get into the history. As mentioned, this was brought before us through zoning enforcement staff. They identified in October of last year that the existing non-electronic price signage had been removed and replaced with electronic price signage. And, get it back out here. You can see it from an angle view here. This was taken yesterday, and then last month, this sign. So you can see that the electronic signage there, if you can see where I've highlighted, that's the portion that's been changed. And that's what was identified by zoning enforcement as having been changed. About a week after they identified it, zoning enforcement sent the title holder a notice of violation. Subsequently, the property reached out to a sign company, and the sign company submitted a signage permit application. The rest of their signage was reviewed, and I believe, since it didn't come to us through board, I believe it was marked as approved within code regulations, but this one, because they changed the legal nonconforming pole sign, is, had to come to the board. And then, after they went through the sign permit process, and were told to come to the zoning board of adjustment, they filed that application, and that was completed in April of this year. The, so, after staff analyzed the process, we did decide that they did not meet the criteria to recommend approval of their requests, as these are all variance requests. And so staff is recommending denial of the requests at this time. We will note that because the amount of signage that was changed only constitutes what is considered less than 50% of the replacement cost of the pole sign, if the requests are denied here at the board today, the appellant does have the right to restore the pole sign as it was before they added the electronic signage. So they could go back to the non-electronic signage and retain the pole sign as it exists today, and previously it existed. So that was part of the reason we went through the information about the dates of when code enforcement brought it forward and things like that. There's a timeline on how long they have to change it back. So, do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Catherine. So Catherine, I'm not just playing trivia with you here, but sometimes I do throw out some questions that get into some information from the past. The city of Des Moines banned the installation of pole signs, as well as any enlargement or alteration of such signs. How many years ago? Has it been a decade now?
About 12.
2012? So for more than a decade.
And slowly, bit by bit, as pole signs have been coming forward for changes and alterations, the city has been requiring them to either remove them or come to the zoning board of adjustment.
Right.
And so this one is following that process indirectly, and is here before you to.
So this is not a recent change in anything to anybody who's either owned a business long-term, or been in the sign business long time in Des Moines?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions?
I did forget to, I'm so sorry. I forgot to bring up that we did send out comment cards and did receive back three. All three were in opposition. And then, here we go. And that would be all three of them.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks for sharing. All right. Appreciate your presentation. Thank you. All right. Applicant, or representative of the applicant. Thank you for waiting. It's your turn. And if you've seen a little bit here, you just need your name, address, and you've got up to 10 minutes to present your case.
I'm Kelly Scott from Prairie Rose Sign and Canopy. Address is 201 Road M47, Walnut, Iowa.
Go ahead. You've got the floor. Why should we grant this variance from our ordinance?
Basically, we're asking that it be allowed to remain as installed. It was an oversight on our part, back when it was installed, it was sold as a several-location package. This was the only one in Des Moines. The rest of the signage that was changed at that time was permitted. This one, it was a simple reface, no structural changes, other than just adding the LED price sign, which in most places are allowed. Additionally, changing this to a monument isn't feasible, because there is no place on the property where a monument is going to be both visible and does not block the site triangle for traffic. The only place that it could be moved where it doesn't block the site triangle is to the north side of the property, and with setbacks as they sit, the neighboring business would, the vehicles in the parking lot would block the visibility. Obviously, visibility for a gas station price sign is more inherently important to business versus just about any other business, since that is what brings in the traffic. That is it.
Okay. All right. Questions for Kelly? I might throw, you went here, so you said that this was a package you bid on, multiple locations across, what, the state or the Midwest?
Yes.
Or something? Do you do other work in Des Moines on a regular basis?
Some.
Some? So are you aware that in the city of Des Moines, if you're going to bid on a job, you should probably check with city staff and say, hey, if I want to get in on this, what are your requirements?
At the time of this, we were grossly short of help.
Okay.
That's something that I would normally spearhead, and I was outrunning a crew at the time.
Sure. I got you. And I don't know the answer to this, but I know I've seen, like, to a degree, on a canopy, you know, you've got a limitation on, you know, square footage on, you know, facades of structures and buildings, but I've seen a lot of canopies where they'll put the price on the canopy instead.
If that's an option, we are open to it.
Okay. All right. All right. Any other questions for Kelly? Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We've got a big audience here, yep. So is there anybody who is here to speak in support of the applicant's variance request? All right. Seeing none, anybody here to speak in opposition or neutrality? Seeing none. Do we have any further questions for city staff? Do you have something you want to add? All right. Go ahead.
Catherine Drehouse, planner for the city. I'd just like to clarify that the city of Des Moines does not allow electronic signage on the canopy.
Canopies, okay.
So.
Seeing if people call, then they know that, and, yeah, okay. But good for that clarification. Thank you. All right. We'll close the public portion. But good for that clarification. Thank you. All right. We'll close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. Anybody got any initial thoughts here? Well, we, some of us have been on the board for a short time or a long time, but you know, pole signs have not been allowed in the city of Des Moines for over 12 years now or thereabouts. And generally speaking, you know, making significant repairs, altering them, adding in, you know, changeable pricing signs, that's considered a violation of the zoning ordinance. And somebody would have to have one heck of a good reason of why they would need a variance from our zoning ordinance. And I know Kelly presented, well, we couldn't put one here because of vision, this and that. I didn't see anything presented that showed it did violate the vision clearance triangle. You know, if somebody makes a statement to that, I'd need to see something on paper to go with that. At that intersection on the southeast corner, there is some green space. And again, there is a vision triangle you got to stay out of. But it didn't look like this was about, gee, we didn't look at alternatives first and did this. We just did this first and there are no alternatives. And unfortunately, I don't like to say this, but coming to ask for forgiveness rather than permission, I can't make decisions based on that. This is at the variance test level and I don't see anything presented here that shows there's a, a need for a variance to keep a 20-foot something tall pole sign there. So, Marlis?
I move to support the staff recommendation of denial.
Would there be a second by anyone on the?
Oh, no, no, I was going to, I was going to just comment on kind of what you said before we go vote. Is that fine?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, I, I, I really feel for the guy in terms of, you know, short staff, you know. A lot of businesses have been short staff and oversight, errors are made, but there are consequences to that oversight. And it sounds like if they revert it back, they can retain a pole sign. Is that my understanding?
Put it back to the way it was.
Put it back the way it was, if they, if they truly want to keep it that way. And so then they're really just out the cost of the LED replacement. So.
Which is true.
So I, I, I support my colleagues here with denying the variance.
So we got a motion by Marlis and a second by Rhonda, unless there's further discussion. Heather?
Under this staff recommendation, it says that they have the option to work with the city's real estate division to vacate a portion of excess. Am I on the right one?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just kidding.
That's on our, that's on our funeral home one, but yes.
Well, I thought, I thought that was a great, like, solution there.
I had to do a double take there too.
I'll be voting with you guys.
Okay. Well, to, to go through and poll our members here then, we do have a motion by Marlis, a second by Rhonda. All those in favor to deny the requested variance, raise your right hand. Say aye. All right. No opposed, so that motion carries six to zero. So sorry about that on this one, but we've pretty much got to stick to the requirements here for variance requests. So, so that concludes our agenda items here for today. Elections. I guess we did not think about this. Yeah, we didn't think about this. Now, we are missing Dave. Justin is still here. But, you know, he'd be great to nominate for some stuff, but since he already resigned. So generally speaking, we do an annual election for chair and vice chair. Dave is our current vice chair. Correct, Frank?
Correct.
Okay. So I guess we'll just start with nominations. Certainly, the floor is open across the board all the time. Would there be any nominations for vice chair? You can nominate yourself or someone else. Tom? All right. Tom nominates Dave Gare for vice chair. Is there a second? I'll second that one. All right. So a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. All right. Motion carries six to zero. Some of your last votes coming up. All right. So a motion for chair. There's been a chair for a very, very long time, but that does come up annually. So the floor is open to nominations for anyone for chair. Are there any nominations? Okay, you guys are moving way too quick here. Well, thank you. All right. So we got a motion by Tom, a second by Heather. All those in favor, raise your right hand. I'm not going to vote for myself because it's a landslide, five to zero. It's an honor and a privilege to serve with each of you here. And Justin, thank you so much for spending these last few years with us. Yes. All right. Minutes, minutes from the last meeting. If you were here last month, if there's no corrections, would there be a motion to approve by Rhonda? Second. There we go. Second by Justin. All right. All those in favor, say aye. We were here last month. That's everybody. All right. Motion carries. Minutes are passed. This hearing is adjourned.